Okay, ladies and gentlemen, can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Hope you had a nice weekend. Joe, we have some exemplary people to recognize, correct?
We do, we do. I'm really happy to recognize both Stephanie Vandeventer and Jim Legnert, our PE teachers at Jackie Hollow. Steph and Jim teach all 550 kids on the Jackie Hollow campus, often in combined classes. If you ever walked by there, there's usually about 60 kids in the gym at any given time. They've created a robust intramural program together, but it's their annual Lion Ball Tournament that's created quite the buzz at Jackie Hollow. Lion Ball is a dodgeball tournament open to all middle school students. The tournament has raised over $7,500 in the five years that it's been in existence. They've donated to a number of different causes in those five years. The first three years, they donated to Homes for Troops. Last year, proceeds went to the fallen police officers who died in the line of duty in Bristol. And then this year's proceeds hit a little bit closer to home, and those funds will be donated to the Pizza Melitus Scholarship in memory of our former Jackie Hollow basketball coach. So what's equally impressive as the fundraising is the school community spirit that the Lion Ball Tournament generates. There were 24 teams this year, about 75 kids who participated, probably even a little bit more. Kids were dressed in, all different teams were dressed in different costumes. Awards given to the team with the best costume. Hundreds of other kids in the stands, parents, I think just about every Jackie Hollow staff member stayed for the tournament. They even, Steph and Jim actually invited high school kids up to help out this year, which really added a little special feature. So Julia was copied on an email, and she shared it with me, from a parent to Steph and Jim the other day. And the parents said it best. She said, "Your humor, kindness, and ability to empathize with life as a middle schooler provides them with a positive outlet, a safe space, and makes them love going to school. I know how much time and effort you put into Lion Ball Tournament, but that is just a small part of all you do. Thank you for all you do to make school fun for the kids. We appreciate it greatly, and we just wanted to acknowledge and recognize them and let them know that we appreciate you greatly, too." If you come on up, we've even made little certificates for you, too.
Okay, we're going to move on to our reports of the committees, starting with our student reps. And you may go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, Monroe Board of Education. I hope you're having a marvelous Monday. The 36th Annual Music and Meatballs Celebration will take place this Saturday, March 9, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the Massey Cafeteria. Enjoy a dinner prepared by Dave's Planet Pizza with live music from the Massey students. Tickets are available for purchase online and help support the music department. In addition, the National Business Honor Society will be hosting a dodgeball tournament Wednesday, March 13 after school. Team signups are due this Friday for all those interested.
Last Monday and Tuesday, Massey Robotics competed in the Southern New England Regional Championships. This year, at the Total Mortgage Arena in Bridgeport. This was the first year Connecticut has hosted this important event. After an exciting and competitive two days, we had two teams that qualified for the World Championships, 4478E and 4478U. They'll be competing in Dallas, Texas in April. Congrats and good luck to those teams.
For the sports read, make sure to congratulate Massey Girls Basketball for winning 4D-32 against New Canaan in the second round CIAC Class L matchup on Friday, March 1. In addition, congratulate junior boys swimmer Brendan Kerrberger on breaking the record for both the 200 IM and the 100 Breaststroke Event, also on March 1. Finally, Massey Boys Hockey just were hailed victorious today, scoring seven against nothing in the first round of the CIAC Division III State Tournament, with senior Nick Condeb scoring six goals and an assist. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful night.
Great, thank you very much. Any board members have any committee reports? No? Okay, moving on. Anyone sign up, Joe?
No, there was an issue with the link.
No, there was? Okay.
There was no one signed up.
Anyone for public participation? Not hearing anyone, not seeing anyone. We'll move on. I don't have a report of the chair. I know you're brokenhearted, but I will move on. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Any questions on the minutes? Go ahead, Dennis.
As much as I sit next to Greg Bino, mine's not condo, it's condon. You don't mind changing it? Adding an N on the minutes.
Typo on your spelling? Next month, we'll do something different.
Yeah, don't cut too crazy, okay?
Any other questions or comments on the minutes? No? How about the warrants? Nope? How about the transfers? There were budget transfers. No questions on the budget transfers? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Christine, seconded by Dennis, any discussion? None. All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much. We're going to go to the report of the superintendent. Go ahead, Joe.
Thanks. We'll start with Jen. You had some good news for us, some special ed. Good news, I'll take good news.
Good news.
Can you hear me?
Good. How are you?
Good, how are you? Okay, so we had two students who moved into district in the month of February, and they are both high-cost students. We had four students who were dismissed from services, and we had one student who moved out of district. We had 13 kids who were made eligible for services in the month of February as well, so our total is at 599. Moving on to our financials. Our tuition public line increased by $37,000. That was due to student programming changes. And we also are showing a credit in tuition private for $57,000 due to student programming changes as well. And along with that credit, we also received, for the tuition private, we received a credit for credit in transportation as well for another $30,000. My good news is we received our first installment of excess cost in the amount of $568,000, which really helps us out with our bottom line, which is excellent, and we're still expecting another $189,000 by end of May, beginning of June.
And you said that was 568,000?
568,000.
Good.
Question?
Go ahead, Dennis.
599, the highest number we've had?
Yeah.
And that's going against the 619,000 that we have lost. Ron, are we covered with the extra budget for special ed? The extra funding?
We'll be covered if we need it.
Okay.
We have the set aside money.
Right now, we're about $50,000.
Right, with this, right.
Before that next installment, which is, how much again, Jen?
189.
And Jen, you had, so that's four total high-needs kids this year. And if I remember right, there were seven last year. So that's 11 in like one full year, which is significant for a district.
In a calendar year, yes.
I just want to say that out loud.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. I know down in new business, we have discussion approval of the recognition ceremony at Jackie Hollow and the Massey graduation. I just figured I'd put it in my report. We can talk about it there. But just to give an idea of graduation timelines, right now, the projected last day of school is Friday, June 14. We traditionally hold Massey's graduation the day before, which is usually the last day of exams. The 14th is usually the makeup day of exams. So if we work back from that, I'm going to recommend tonight that we make Tuesday, June 11, the Jackie Hollow recognition ceremony, with Wednesday, June 12 being the rain date. And then that would make the Massey graduation Thursday, June 13, with Friday, June 14. That's the rain date. And then if we experience rain on both days of a school ceremony, it gets moved into the Massey gymnasium on that second day. I know people are asking. Families complain.
Yeah, yep. We got emails, so it'll be, it'll be good to set those. Any questions for Joe? No? Okay, Mike, you're on.
Thanks, ma'am. Mike, come up. I know we talked about, I'll get this off sleep mode here, Mike, too. I know we mentioned TEAM during budget discussions. TEAM is the state induction program for new teachers. That includes professional learning and mentorship. So I wanted Mike just to kind of give a brief overview of the process so you know exactly what that entails and what's required of new teachers and their mentors in the TEAM process.
It may have been a while since you've heard about TEAM and what it entails. So tonight, I'm just going to spend some time just talking a little bit about the different parts of it, because you see there's a budget line for mentors. The budget line still says BEST PROGRAM, because that's what it used to be called before. It was the TEAM program from the state, but in effect, it's the same. It's the induction program for new teachers. So TEAM is a program that, you know, is based in our district. Like, we manage our own TEAM program. But it is a, but it's supported by the State Department of Education. It's designed by the State Department of Education. And the point of it is to provide induction services to beginning teachers. So it supplies support and mentoring so that we can make sure that teachers know what's expected of them, the idea of professional growth. Just because you've become a teacher doesn't mean that your growth ends. It really starts off that process of looking at what's happening in front of your classroom with your students and giving them, giving new teachers support on improving practices in the classroom. One of the purposes of it is to really stop new teacher attrition also. Keep them in the classrooms, keep them with the support, get that one-to-one mentorship that is so important for all beginning teachers. So TEAM itself is for any beginning teacher, heretofore they call them BTs, who are serving under what is an initial educator certificate. And generally speaking, that's teachers in years one and two of their teaching experience. So if we hire a teacher and they come with five years of experience, they're not in their initial educator. They don't go into the TEAM program. It's simply teachers who are in their first two years or are, for some other reason, serving under initial educator certificate. So what we do, and what we're required to do by the state, is assign them a mentor. And that mentor is state-trained, and they work with them throughout the two-year process. And we work really hard to make sure, you know, if it could be somebody who is like on their grade-level team, certainly someone who's in their classroom, when it's, you know, definitely in their discipline, if it's at the secondary level, to really work with them one-to-one on a variety of things that come up. So the way that TEAM is structured is there are five different modules. And the top four, the ones on top, the four modules, they sort of take a part of every single, what happens for a teacher, like classroom environment, planning for learning, a module about instruction, and also a module about assessment. And then there's our last module about professional responsibilities that I'm going to talk to you about that's a little different. And actually, all new teachers, all teachers who are new to Monroe take part in regardless of how many years' experience they have. So they have to compose a paper for each one of those modules. And I'm going to talk to you quickly about how that process goes. There are five phases for each one of these modules. And each module is about eight to 10 weeks. And what happens is they go through and they think about their practice in their classroom and their students before them. They reflect upon that. They decide what is a goal that they want to work on as a new teacher, depending upon what is happening in their classroom in front of them. They take part in professional learning. They try out that new learning. And then they reflect on what it did, what it did for their teaching, what it did for their students. A little bit more specifically, they go through, and I'll give you an example of what this would look like for like a fourth-grade teacher. So they look at their students in front of them. They look at the data they have in front of them. So a new teacher might say, "My gosh, these kids, in the first couple months, they don't seem to stay on task. My students aren't staying on task. I put up these rules. They're not listening to these rules. They're not really doing what I'm asking them to do. I think what I need to work on is work on student engagement," which is one of those indicators from the Connecticut Core of Teaching. So teaching, just like learning, has a core of sort of standards. And the Connecticut Core of Teaching has all these indicators in it. So for each one of these modules, they choose one of the indicators to focus on. And so if a teacher is dealing with that in front of them, they talk to their mentor. They say, "Yeah, this might be a good thing to really work on, the student engagement, and getting students to follow rules and responsibilities in the class." And then they have to create with their mentor an initial summary of what they found in their classroom during that time with those students in front of them. So they will write up an initial summary. And then they work with their mentor and also their school admin, their principal usually, to set a professional growth goal. And that growth goal is to say, you know, "I am going to work on engagement by doing A, B, C, and D in hopes that this will be what the results are going to be." And the reason why we work not just with a mentor but also with the principal is the principal has access to all the teachers in the school also. They look at, so when I had teachers, when I was at Jackie Hollow, who were maybe dealing with a situation, let's say engagement, I go, "You know, there's a teacher who's phenomenal at this." So as a principal, I go, "You know what? You need to go in and see this teacher do this, because you see this teacher do it once or twice, you're going to get some great strategies out of it." Or, "I have this great article. I have this great book." So it builds sort of a mentorship sort of school. It's not just a one-to-one necessarily. It's, you know, there's a whole team to support new teachers. So they create a professional growth plan, and they select specific professional learning resources. Like I said, they can go and, you know, read an article, see another teacher teach, have somebody come in and do an observation of them and give them feedback, videotape themselves teaching and do a critique of it. Those are all things that they can do to sort of improve their own practice. Once they do, that phase three is engaging in that professional learning to build on those skills. And they have to record what the examples are about what they learned, what they saw, what they spoke about, and then how it relates to their own practice. And the phase four is to actually try it in the practice. What did you do? What did you have to change? You know, I said, "Oh, this is, this book told me to do this. Oh, well, I did this. And then this happened, so I had to make an adjustment to it." It's a lot about reflection. It's a lot about new teachers' planning, reflecting after they act upon things. They analyze how it impacted themselves and how it impacted the student, and they have to record specific evidence. And then finally, they reflect on it. One of the most important things about TEAM that we talk to teachers about is it doesn't all need to be successful. Just because you tried something, you don't fail if it didn't work as well as you wanted it to work. You fail if you don't show that you reflected upon it, that it had an impact, that you reflected upon the impact it had on your learning and on your students. Because as teachers, we all know, we try things, and sometimes they don't all work. What makes us better teachers is learning from that and trying something differently the next time. So the reflection part is incredibly important for the TEAM process. The collaboration with the mentor to talk about, "What do we do next? What's next? If it didn't work, what would be the next thing that you do?" And then, again, as you see, that documenting specific evidence of impact in practice and outcomes. So they do all this, and during that whole, during all five phases, they're writing up a paper. And so this is like an example, this four-page paper that they have to write up about all these things. It has to have all this evidence in it to show what they've learned, what they've tried, how it worked, what the impact was, and then how they reflected upon it. And then that paper for each one of those four gets given to, we take part in a collaboration, like a regional collaboration with papers. So we send it in, and a teacher from another district who is also trained is the one who assesses it, and assesses whether it passes or not. So because we're part of that collaboration, all our mentors who are currently working with new teachers, they have to do the same for another school. So it's part of our sort of agreement with being part of that collaborative, is that we do that. You know, we think it's best for them to be looked at by someone on the outside, a very sort of objective viewer. Like, if the mentor was correcting somebody else's paper, it might not be as objective. And so we get much better, you know, results out of it and much better feedback when it's an objective viewer. So that's part of it. So they do that for each four of those modules over the course of two years. That fifth module is called Professional Responsibilities in Teacher Leadership, and it looks a lot different. And it's actually just one afternoon, one two-hour afternoon. And we make every new teacher in Monroe, regardless of how many years' experience they have, take part in this. And what it is, is those five areas of responsibility as a teacher. You can see them up there. It's part of scenarios that the state provides to us. And we put all the new teachers and their mentors and union representatives, and Joe and Sheila and I and other admin are there to facilitate a conversation with those scenarios. So the state did a really nice job of pulling all these scenarios that are true. They're actually, they occurred in the state at some point in the last 25 years, situations that happened to teachers. And they may not have behaved appropriately in that, so we have that sort of conversation. The reason we have all new teachers take part in it is there's, every school district sort of deals with things in a different way. We want to make sure we're really consistent with what our philosophy is in those five really important areas. So it allows them to hear a consistent voice and to hear it from union representation, hear it from Joe, from Sheila, from other administrations, and their mentors do that. So everybody goes through that module. So mentors. Mentors are experienced teachers in our district. You have to have at least five years' experience in our district to be a mentor in our district. They go through TEAM training. They have to update that training with modules that the state provides. This is, they receive a $500 stipend each year to serve when they're serving as a mentor. During the two years of mentoring, they have to have a minimum of 50 hours of mentoring with the, with the, with the beginning teacher. It's usually a heck of a lot more than 50 hours, and that all has to be written up in a log. Like I said, they review those modules, and we also have district TEAM meetings two or three a year to talk through things. So that's what the role of the mentors is for our district. So really, the TEAM timeline is year one. They, everybody does Module Five, and then they choose two other modules to do during that time. Usually, it's classroom environment and instruction. It might change a little bit. Sometimes our special ed new teachers will choose assessment because of their work with assessment with students. We want to make sure that they're sort of doing things appropriately as far as assessment. And then in year two, they do the remaining two modules. And then at the end, they're eligible for provisional certification and moving up to the next certification level. So that's sort of TEAM in a little nutshell there. Any questions about?
Sorry.
That's all right.
How do you deal with disparity? You've got teachers coming in, just use the reading for an example. We had a pretty good conversation last meeting. Right? People coming, trained with that technique. And go, "How do you deal with that with our methods, right?" They're, you know, they've got to learn how we're doing it versus how they were taught in other school districts.
Right.
How do you bridge that gap?
I mean, when we have instructional leaders, I mean, instructional leaders really are the people that work with that, to talk about, "What is our curriculum? You know, what are our means of instruction?" I mean, that's, that's sort of the hard thing. Like, that's the art of teaching, you know? We go through a pretty rigorous hiring process for teachers. The teachers we generally bring on, especially if they have experience in OG or in Wilson, like, we embrace that, and we say, "Yes." And a lot of times, we're learning from them also. But as far as the curriculum goes, we have pacing guides. You know, we're updating our curriculum to do that. We have, you know, our monthly meetings. We have weekly, you know, midday meetings with them. So there are a lot of other professional development to do that. A lot of times with the mentors, that's why we try to keep them in the same area with them, because they're really their sort of go-to person to walk them through the curriculum, their instruction their first year. So that's really important that we have that. That's why we try to really make sure that we have somebody who is as closely aligned to what they're teaching do that, or someone who at least has taught that before. You know, because in elementary, they do move around grades sometimes. So if we have a second grade, even though it's a fourth-grade teacher, somebody who's at least taught fourth grade before and knows that curriculum is important. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, if somebody comes with a preponderance of evidence that the other method is better, has it ever switched the other way?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're constantly like changing our curriculum and changing our, yeah. And, you know, I can think of one teacher right now who, we got from another school district in one of our elementary schools, who's brought a ton to her team and brought a ton to, I mean, I've been sitting in meetings and we've pulled her in to be like, "She has a lot of experience at Performance Matters," which is their new data program. And she's come in and done like a little PD for me to say, like, "How did you use this most effectively?" So we don't shy away from saying, "You got something that we need, and that's great." Like, that's important for us to be really open to that.
Kind of a segue. Where are we with getting our reading program exempt?
We're going to do a presentation at the next, at our next meeting. Yeah, I want to address and follow up to the speaker at the last meeting, as well as, you know, follow up to when we talked about the waiver probably about a year ago.
Yep, yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. More involved than I had known, so thank you. It's good. Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business. We have a policy that we tabled from last time, taping, recording of board meetings revised. Joe, you have an update for us from FYI?
Yeah, I spoke to the Freedom of Information Commission. Sheila spoke to CAVE. They both agreed that there's no restriction on what we put in our policy. So whatever we put in the policy is fine. So the policy is fine as read.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with that? Any other questions on that? Policy committee? No? Everybody's okay?
No, we're good.
Okay. All right, so it won't lock us into every meeting as before, yeah. Okay, can I have a motion to approve policy number 9326.1, bylaws of the board, taping, recording board meetings as presented at tonight's meeting? Motion by Jeff, seconded by Christine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Motion passes. New business, discussion and approval of Jackie Hollow Recognition Night and Massey High School graduation date. Can I have a motion to approve Tuesday, June 11, 2024, with a rain date of Wednesday, June 12, for the Jackie Hollow Recognition Night and Thursday, June 13, 2024, with a rain date of Friday, June 14, for the Massey High School graduation? Jerry makes that motion. Can I have a second? Christine, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Unanimous. Thank you very much. There you go, Steve. There you go. Okay, and Julia. I don't want to forget you, Julia.
And Julia's there, too.
Okay, item number B under new business. Discussion and possible action regarding the ad hoc District-wide Master Plan Selection Committee recommendation for the award of a bid proposal for planning and architectural services in connection with a district-wide master plan. The ad hoc committee met at 6:30, went into executive session. We came out. A motion was made with a recommendation. So can I have a motion for the board to go into executive session to discuss those particulars? Upon the certification of the superintendent of schools that the public interest in the disclosure of the responses to bid proposals for planning and architectural services in conjunction with the district-wide master plan is outweighed by the public interest in the confidentiality of such responses, I hereby move that the board enter into executive session to review and discuss the responses. And I further move that the superintendent of schools, Joe Kozba, Assistant Superintendent Sheila Casinelli, Director of Finance, Ron Bonowski, Director of Operations, Dan, I won't, Dan Kay, Steve Kirch, Town of Monroe Finance member, be invited into the executive session. And I'm going to learn your last name, because I'm embarrassed that I can't pronounce it correctly. I'll say that on the record. So I apologize for that, Dan. Can I have that motion? Jeff, second. Christine, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, we are in executive session at 7:29. Okay, the board with guesses out of executive session at 7:46. And I'd like to know if someone would like to make the following motion. Motion that the board award RFP 2023-01 for planning and architectural services in connection with a district-wide master plan to Silver Petraselli, and that the superintendent be authorized to negotiate and enter into a contract with Silver Petraselli for such services. Motion?
So stated again.
Dennis, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? No, I will just, I want to thank the committee.
Absolutely.
Dan and Steve and everyone that participated, Sheila. We did get four responses, and we got presentations from all four of the groups. Were impressed by all four. Tough decision. And the subcommittee made that recommendation tonight and then just discussed it to the full board. So we're looking forward to getting this underway for sure. Anything else on that, Joe?
I'm doing that. Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Joe, you have something to add in about?
I do. I have.
Something in front of us?
It's, it's.
Haven't blown up yet?
March, yeah, they're not ticking. March is board appreciation month, so just a little something on behalf of Sheila and I to say thank you for, in addition to your extravagant salaries.
Thank you. That'll be on Facebook later.
We would like a raise.
Yes.
Get you stool.
Yep. You know what, zero of zero.